25 inaugural ceremony will now begin. I ask that we all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I turn the ceremony over to our current House President.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the January 8th meeting of the New Brunswick City Council. Today, we are excited that we have some swearing in of newly re-elected councilpeople, so I want to welcome everyone here. I want to take a special welcome to some of our commissioners and some dignitaries that are here today. Welcome to Assemblyman John Anderson, Beatrice Masquerade from the New Brunswick Democratic Organization, Commissioner Penny, Commissioner Penny Raskin-Arber, Commissioner Scott Alton, and Commissioner Tomar. Thank you for being here with us. And also a special thank you for being here. And I'm glad to see him. Somebody that I hold dear to my heart just for your sake. Welcome, everyone. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I will read the certificates of election for Council Elects Glenn Fleming, John A. Anderson, Suzanne M. Socor-Ludwig, Manuel J. Castaneda, and Matthew B. Ferguson. Followed by the administering of the oaths, each member of the council member will be called up at the time of the swearing-in. A statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to an election held in the county of Middlesex on the 5th day of November in the year 2024 for the election of city council. The said Board did determine that at said election, Glenn J. Fleming, John A. Anderson, Suzanne M. Socor-Ludwig, Manuel J. Castaneda, and Matthew B. Ferguson were duly elected council members for the city of New Brunswick, county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full, and correct statement of the determination of the Board of County Canvassers as filed in the office of the county of Middlesex. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand this 20th day of November in the year of our Lord 2024, signed by the Chair of the Board of County Canvassers and attested by the Honorable Nancy J. Pinkman, Pinkin, County Clerk. At this time, I ask for Councilmember Glenn Fleming to please come to be sworn in. I
Hi.
State your name.
Glenn Fleming.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties of
All the duties of
The office of council member
The office of council member.
Of the city of New Brunswick
Of the city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Giving honor to God, who is indeed the head of my life, to my family, who couldn't be here or scattered around. One of my sons has served in the United States Navy. One of my sons is in college. And my wife, she couldn't be here today. But all duly elected officials, all my councilmates, and the people of the city of New Brunswick. I think about four years ago, when we took this same oath, we were in our basement, on the phone, and we took the oath like that. And there was a lot of fear. There was a lot of anxiety because people didn't know what the future was going to hold. You know, because we were in our house. We were just coming out of COVID. I believe we were still in our house. We hadn't come back fully from COVID yet. Now, four years later, we've opened up as a country, but there's a lot of anxiety around right now because of what's about to take place in a couple of weeks. There's a storm coming in this country. And we have to be ready for that. I gave my students and any given day, I give my students I talk to at least 500 students every day from the clubs that I run and everything. And I had given them assignment to talk about what their vision is for the next four years if they would become president. And many of them, they were anxious because a lot of my students are they're recent immigrants. So a lot of them are nervous about the future right now. And I told them, they said, "Why should we have to envision the next four years?" Because you always have to have a vision. I told them, "You always have to have a vision." Somewhere I read where it says, "If you don't have a vision, then people perish." And in this city, it's important that we have a vision. No matter what's going on on the national level, we must have a vision for the city for the next four years, the next 10 years. Because when you have a vision, you go forward. You progress. And that's why I'm glad that I have councilmembers here that are willing to work together, that we move forward, where there's not a lot of backbiting, not a lot of arguing and stuff like that. In closing, I remember by the words of John Lewis, Congressman John Lewis, who I met one time before. And he wrote a book called Walking with the Wind. And what he literally is talking about was when his house, they used to get these big storms where they lived at. They had these huge storms, and pieces of the house would come up. You know, pretty pieces of the house would come up. And when some parts of the house would come up, it'd all run to this side. And then this side would come up. Then they ran to one side of the house, and that side of the house would come up. But they learned that in order to keep the house together, they had to all join hands and work together and walk with the wind. And that's what we have to do in this country because there's a storm coming. There's definitely a storm coming. But instead of us working against each other, we can join hands together and walk with the wind. God bless you all. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
At this time, I ask Councilmember John A. Anderson. I
Hi.
State your name.
John A. Anderson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties of
All the duties of
The office of council member
The office of council member.
Of the city of New Brunswick
The city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. No way I can follow that. Just want to thank the voters of New Brunswick for their electing me and having had faith. I also want to thank the fellow councilpeople, all the city employees that I work with and see, and appreciate everything they do. Thank you.
Our next council member-elect is Suzanne M. Socor-Ludwig, who has already had her oath administered. We will proceed with Councilmember Manuel J. Castaneda. At this time, I ask that the Honorable Judge Daley please come up.
We've been working on this. I think we're good.
Yeah.
Is there anybody here? Oh, we do have people. Let's get a good shot. Make sure that the councilman's on the video and everything. Sorry. I
I.
Say your name.
Manuel Jose Castaneda.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of
All the duties of the office of
Councilmember of the city of New Brunswick
Councilmember of the city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I would say that I'm batting clean up, but there's more people. I don't want to take up too much time. I just want to say thank you to my wife, my family. My kid's going to be here because there's school stuff going on. But in reality, I also want to recognize my mother, who I lost over two years ago, that in these moments is where I hold her dear in my heart. I want to thank and look forward to continuing to work with my fellow councilmembers, with all the staff and workers here in the great city of New Brunswick to continue to do the great work that we do. I want to also acknowledge our distinguished guests, our county commissioners, our assemblymen. And we can't go anywhere without our support from the Middlesex Democratic Organization. So thank you very much. And so looking forward to not only working on a city level, but working with the county, working with the state to weather whatever storm comes this way. And so I will say that I'm hopeful. And I'm hopeful because of the people that we have in this state, the people that we have in this county, the people that we have in this city, to weather whatever storm might come. And that's why I will keep that level of hope with me as we move forward. Other than that, I thank, I obviously thank the voters of New Brunswick, and I thank all those who couldn't vote, supported. And so on to another four years. Thank you very much. And it's all done.
At this time, I ask that Aspire Elizabeth Vignolo please come up to do the oath for Councilmember Matthew Ferguson.
Left hand on the floor.
I
I.
State your name.
Matthew B. Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established
And to the governments established.
In the United States
In the United States.
And in this state
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of
All the duties of the office of
Councilmember of the city of New Brunswick
Councilmember of the city of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Rightfully so TK tells me at the last minute about speeches because he knows they'll be too long if he gives me notice. I want to thank everyone on council, especially our president, who's been a mentor in my first year. And I want to thank everyone at the city. We have an amazing team here across the city, not just in administration, but across all departments for your support. And you're welcome in the year that I've been here. It's an honor to serve this city. For those of you that know, I've moved around a bunch and lived in a lot of different cities. And I'm proud that this is the city that is my home. And I'm proud to call it home. I wake up in the morning, and the first two thoughts in my mind are, "What great things can we do in New Brunswick?" New Brunswick's not a perfect city. There's no such thing. But we are striving for perfection and moving towards it every day. And I think about that. The second thing is I do think it'd be great if we could get a couple more Rutgers basketball wins. You know, just but you know, you can't get everything, right? There's no thing. I want to thank my amazing partner and my attorney, just in case anyone comes up. Elizabeth for swearing me in and all her support in the last year, her family who are here tonight. And above all, we've heard a lot about what's happening. And my promise to you is that every day, I'm going to do everything I can to help support and make this city even better than it is today. And tomorrow, we'll make it even better. And we'll just keep working, and that work will never be done. So thank you. And thank you again.
All right. This concludes our ceremony. The reorganization meeting of January 8th, 2025 will now begin. Council President.
At this time, we're going to go into our agenda review session. So maybe some time if anybody wants to disagree. Stay close, you're welcome here. So the agenda review session will begin now, followed immediately by the City Council for organization video of January 8th, 2025. We have a couple of minutes. We have report of correspondence by city clerk. We have organization matters. We have orders on Saturday meeting. We don't have any at this time. We have in first meeting, in first meeting, in first one, my councilman, the back of our addresses of the city of New Brunswick, table 10. This is where history parties songs for county clerk. We are adding to 49 scenes. And in first one, we got on term taxes session. And we're going to have a meeting between the city of New Brunswick, New Jersey, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Vermont, New Orleans, ALC. This is the city of New Jersey, New Jersey. We have resolutions 1, 2, 3, 1. Resolution number 1, we have 2025 meeting scheduled. Number 2, approve a new amendment. 3, council designation of reasons to various authorities awards and provisions for 2025. 4, designation of council members to planning board. 5, designation of council member to broad director to see the market. 6, approve 2025 temporary city project. 7, designation of bank depositaries and cash management plan for 2025. 8, fix interest rate of dividend taxes and border and sewer charges for 2025. 9, authorize cancellation of tax to the industries of less than $10. 10, authorize direct making charges and close association in tax sale. 11, authorize chief financial officer to sell on anticipation of capital moves and private settlement for 2025. 12, authorize tax collector to make tax refunds to less than $10 for 2025. 13, authorize senior engineer to secure land insurance regulatory permits. 14, authorize senior engineer and mayor to execute valid entry purchase forms in 2025. 15, authorize senior engineer to execute home harvest identity agreements in 2025. 16, authorize tax assessor to fight tax appeals. 17, designate public agency compliance officer for 2025. 18, resolution authorizes contractors earn a group state contracts and ventures. 19, authorize advertisement agency of goods for various foods, supplies, and services. 20, authorize senior engineer to sign site remediation project documents. 21, resolution authorizing the cancellation of various outstanding checks. 22, designation of official newspaper for 2025. 23, approve resolution for acceptance of low-term tax exemption application. 24, authorize refund for reviewing tax certificates. 25, resolution authorizing the city of New Brunswick to join the mid-state municipal joint insurance fund. And appoint Michael to take over the city's administrator as insurance fund commissioner. 26, advise and consent to be a company of a medicine management coordinator. 27, approve payroll. 28, approve the role contract with national nutrition administrators. 29, authorize extension of contract with wellness coaches USA, ALC, doing business as Ramp Health. 30, authorize tax collector to cancer certificate. 24, 00119. 31, resolution amendment, resolution 122469, person-to-person transfer of legal devices from Allen, Raven, and Crossy, ALC to RJ, RLC, to A9, 30 Burgers and Bruce. Then we have items for discussion by council, public comment. Days to be remembered, the next city council agenda review session will be Wednesday, January 22nd at 5:30, followed immediately by the council meeting. At this time, the meeting is going to order.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Here.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig.
Here.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the notice of parties of the open public meeting act has been complied with and satisfied that if you have no notice, we gave sufficient notice of the time and place and time of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick as the five-year city clerk has been placed on an appropriate voting board in city hall and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Review.
Move the minutes. Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondents helped you to write to the public departments?
Yes. Council President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office is forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
At this time, before we go into the organization matters, I just want to say a few words. I just want to say thank you. It has been an honor to serve as your council president for the last two years. As we know, you both, you know, we elected the new council president, president and vice president in two years. I'm just grateful in how we by this, having had the charge of leading these meetings, I'm grateful for the opportunity to work on such excellent and professional, dedicated individuals that we have here in the city of New Brunswick, as well as with the community. I take the good with happiness and those times that were not that good, I take them also because those times are the ones that helps and use for me those times you can use for personal growth and journey, right? And you learn from that. So we're still here. We're going to continue for 2025 to continue working together as a unit as we have been doing for all these years to move the city forward to ensure that we continue thriving as a community. And regardless of the storms and all the things that might happen, it's always, my always thinking has always been that even in the darkness, there's light. Even if it's a dim, dim little bit of light, and as long as you see that, there's still hope. And things are going to get better. And we're going to be moving forward. And so just thank you. I just appreciate all of you. Department heads, thank you for your patience, for being here, answering questions. I really appreciate your commitment and your dedication. So thank you so much. We already did the oath for the newly elected council members. So at this time, I'm going to call the newly elected temporary chairperson. So Mr. Chammy.
No, so I was going to ask for a motion to nomination. Motion to elect TK Chammy for the temporary chair.
Second.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Socor-Ludwig.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Thank you. Members of the council,[1484.32]
Members of the council, it's my honor to be your temporary chair for purposes of accepting nominations for council president for calendar years 2025 and 26. Is there a nomination for council president?
I honorably nominate Councilman John Anderson for the chairperson for the next two years. John exemplifies a public servant, he has a very even keel with the public, he's always willing to help everybody, and I think I'll serve this council very well.
Is there a second?
I say the motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
I would ask that the clerks swear in the newly-elected council president.
Yes, sir.
I.
I. John A. Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government's established.
And to the government's established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The Office of Council President.
Well, how, Office of the Council President.
Of the City of New Brunswick.
Of the City of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Madam Clerk, I hereby turn the meeting over to the newly-elected council president, John Anderson.
I will now call for nominations for council vice president.
To my fellow colleagues and members of the public, it is with excitement that I nominate our dear friend and colleague Manuel Castaneda for the position of council vice president. I believe he serves our community well with distinction, and I think he will represent well as the vice president.
Proud to offer a second to that nomination.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.
At this time, I will ask that the Honorable Judge Bailey please come up.
Actually, Manny didn't, Manny didn't tell me about this, so I'm on overtime now.
I.
I. Malvete Jose Castaneda.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government's established in the United States.
And to the government's established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the Office of.
All the duties of the Office of.
Council Vice President.
Council Vice President.
Of the City of New Brunswick.
Of the City of New Brunswick.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
What made musical chairs?
I didn't realize your permission was.
Thank you, Judge Dale.
I'll pay him that overtime, I believe.
God bless the Council of New Brunswick Council.
Thank you very much, Judge.
We'll now proceed with the regular matters of reading. We have no readings on second reading. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, an ordinance for mandatory revision of ordinances of the City of New Brunswick. Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 1020, Handicap Parking, Section 1020.010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, Adding 259 C.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, January twenty-second, five thirty P.M., same day P.M. twenty-second.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.
We have number two, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the City of New Brunswick and New Jersey Innovation Associates Urban Renewal LLC for a HELOC H2, lot seventeen point zero one, lot one point zero four.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, January twenty-second, five thirty P.M., same day P.M.
Second. Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.
We have Resolution One to thirty-one. Do any of my council members have any questions or comments on the resolutions? First, Mr. Jules, if you could explain number twenty-five.
Council President, members of the council, congratulations. The terms. So, the city is, the city has, is endeavoring to join the Mid-Jersey Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. This is where the city receives its liability insurance, it's a self-insured fund. As, in this committee, you will send the commissioner representing the city and find that, maybe myself. So, I voted for this, and we will be in the picture.
Okay, thank you. And we have Resolutions One to Thirty-one. We are beginning to open up the, to the public. A reminder, you have up to five minutes, one time up for the resolutions. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, council, and congratulations to everyone. Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I think that explanation on twenty-five is maybe lacking a little context, maybe there's more to the story. For almost forty years, the city was part of a different JIP, the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. This is the corrupt agency I've been warning you about. And that agency held an emergency meeting on December thirty-first. And, and for the record, you know, I called this agency corrupt at your November meeting. Mr. Jules said it was very offensive that I did that, but I called them corrupt because they used public funds to give Councilman Fleming a free lawyer to defend against a sexual harassment claim that had nothing to do with his role in city government. And I stand by my assertion that it was corrupt, and I warned you that it was being mismanaged and on the verge of collapse, and it collapsed. The Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund is now being sued for fraud by not one but two of its former members, and they passed this resolution. Past copies should be enough for everybody. Sure, Mr. Jules already has, and he voted for it. This resolution makes clear that there's a unprecedented cash deficit at the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, and the fund, quote, "cannot meet its obligation to the members beyond January 2025." So, I'd like to know, why was this done in an emergency meeting when I saw it coming months ahead, or maybe even years ahead? And what does the city have to say for itself about the mismanagement of the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund? And how can we be assured that this new joint insurance fund, where four of the five MCMJIP members have jumped to, isn't going to end up having the same corruption and mismanagement problems?
Now, we can open direct.
That's not good enough, I'm sorry. This is, this is, this is an unmitigated disaster. I mean, were you aware of this? Was the council aware of this?
Ahead of time?
Yeah, I mean, were you aware that the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund is basically going out of business? And if anything I was saying is incorrect, please correct me. I'm having trouble getting answers.
You were made aware of this by Mr. Jules. Mr. Jules, do you have anything else to say?
I'd be glad to. Mr. Cradville's used terms like corrupt, collapsed, mismanagement, unmitigated disaster. None of those comport with the condition of the Middlesex JIP. None of that, none of those terms while inflammatory, it may build readership in your blog, none of that has taken on at the JIP. The, and I encourage you to speak to the JIP because this isn't the Middlesex JIP meeting, but as a commission, as a past commissioner of the Middlesex JIP, the members left the fund, who has a right to do, and that is the cyclical nature of joint insurance funds.
Not so cyclical, because now this fund has zero members. All the members have abandoned JIP. This is the end of the road. The house of cards has collapsed. I think my assessment is correct based on everything that I can find. Mr. Jules might take a different opinion, but read the resolution for yourself, it says they can't meet their obligations, they don't have the cash. How did that come to be? Twenty years of deficits. The state had to take over.
The state hasn't taken over, the fund is still in existence, the fund still has staff and is still, it is still paying as it would, I'm just not there to answer your question, Mr. Cradville. Okay. You should speak to Ms. Murphy, the executive director of the JIP, and these were these questions, if I may.
Okay, I think I will reach out to Ms. Murphy, but, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, I've been warning about this. I've been trying to raise the alarms about this, and just a couple meetings ago, you told me fund dissolution was not an option. Is this fund dissolution? Is this fair to say this is fund dissolution?
It is not fund dissolution. The fund is still in existence, the fund has to remain in existence to meet its claims. These are all very complicated matters.
I agree.
And if you understand the term of dissolution, you'd understand that the fund is not a dissolution, that the Department of Banking and Insurance, probably the other people should speak to, because those are terms within the statutes that they are.
Sure, and I, for what it's worth, DOJ has not given a substantive response since, since this, you know, thing happened. And I'll follow up more later, but happy.
Thank you. Anyone else on the public wish to address anything on the resolutions at this time? Seeing none.
Move resolutions, seven.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.
Any of my, council members have anything that they need to bring up at this time? And we are getting ready to open the meeting up to the public. Again, I just wanted to remind you about the law on the ordinance. That upon recognition by the chair, which is the president, the person shall proceed to the floor and give his or her name and address in an audible tone, a voice for the records. Statements are addressed to the presiding officer of the council and not to any member thereof. He or she shall limit his or her statement up to five minutes unless further time is granted by the council president. A council member shall not direct any question to a speaker addressing the council except through the presiding officer. So again, just keep it, you know, respectful and through the president. So, if anybody from the public wishes to come up and have anything to say, please do so at this time. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have up to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Cunningham, two seventy, number ten street. I have some things for the city council. I gave you guys a list of demands a couple weeks ago regarding the Code Blue shelter, but after doing some extensive research myself, speaking to Code Blue participants, I have, as well as with all my comrades, updated the demands to reflect some of that. Also, after a conversation with King Jones, after the last counseling, so please read this to this clerk.
Thank you.
So, just to, I'm just going to read through a little bit of my research over the last week. I've been talking to your, to my fellow constituents, I should say. So, the past week, you gathered insights from nine constituents experiencing homelessness in New Brunswick, their narratives highlight systemic barriers, inadequate shelter conditions, and intersecting issues of racism, discrimination, and urban design. This report combines their lived experiences with scholarly research to provide a comprehensive understanding of the challenges they face and recommendations for change. So, I'm just going to actually read through what people said to me. I still, so because I feel the narratives are the most compelling, but I will say that they are so purely inspiring resources as well. So, Appendix One, dossier, detailed notes of discussion with constituents. Constituent one, this individual reported frequent fire alarms disrupting sleep at the Code Blue shelter. The inability to take smoke breaks after nine P.M. forced participants dependent on nicotine to endure withdrawal symptoms overnight. This constituent expressed frustration over the systemic cause of the fire alarm and is deciding that these issues were not caused by sheltering themselves. A woman shared her struggle with displacement due to a lack of affordable housing. She expressed concern about being isolated from her support network if housed outside the Middlesex County. She also highlighted the unique struggles faced by women experiencing homelessness, including harassment while panhandling. A newly-houseless woman described inadequate heating at the Code Blue shelter with cots placed near windows and limited to one blanket. She reported being ejected early in the morning without access to through public transportation and noted the lack of entertainment options such as TV or sharp chargers in the shelter. Constituent four, a formerly incarcerated man described the shelter's conditions as reminiscent of jail. He avoids using Code Blue. He recently experienced police brutality where he was beaten by transit officers. He also expressed frustration with systemic injustices that deterred him from seeking further help. By the way, he sleeps concurrently out of a cargo box, even during cold despotism. Constituent five, several blocks constituents reported racial discrimination at local businesses in downtown New Brunswick on George Street. One man noted that black customers at Burger King were asked to leave after thirty minutes while others were allowed to stay longer. Additionally, the removal of benches downtown created a hostile urban environment for the homeless. Constituent six, a Spanish-speaking man raised concerns about the lack of bilingual staff at Code Blue. He also reported falling ill due to crowded and unsanitary conditions at the shelter, leading him to avoid it and sleep outside. He emphasized the need for better hygiene and spacing between cots. Constituent seven, this woman described being attacked by transit police despite being a victim of a crime. She also highlighted concerns about the shelter's cold conditions and reported that belongings were being searched, leading to mistrust among participants. Although items are being stolen overnight. She suggested that overnight lockers could alleviate the issue. A man reported experiencing racism and hostile urban sign in downtown New Brunswick. He noted that benches have been removed, further marginalizing homeless individuals. He also described discrimination at a local business where black patients, patrons face stricter rules compared to others. Constituent nine, a Spanish-speaking man, oh, this, uh, let's see, one, four. He talked about the lack of language accessibility from Code Blue, he highlighted the overcrowding of cots, less than a foot apart, and the absence of sheets. He also mentioned contracting an illness at the shelter which left him hospital-like, by the way, for four days. These are your constituents, these are people who matter, and, you know, I have been doing the work for you, we've been doing the work for you, actually going and speaking to new constituents and following up on these concerns. It's deeply disturbing to me that I still, there's been no update today about Code Blue dimensions, no, no recourse. I'm excited to be meeting with Escobar tomorrow, I appreciate that, but the rest of you are, are failing, absolutely failing. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address anything in the public comment? Please do so. Please state your name and address, you have up to five minutes.
Thank you so kindly. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Shahar, I'm a resident of Middlesex County. Happy New Year, and congratulations to the new city council president. I'm here tonight because I continue to be deeply concerned for the people of this city. At the last meeting, Mr. Jones, Ms. Escobar, and Ms. Cunningham, among others, made comments on my shelter. I'd like to take a moment to contextualize those in relationship to the city and its responses to homelessness. Nearly all of the differences observed between our programs are a direct reflection of my horror at the easily-avoided failures of their policy. Volunteering there was illuminating, was illuminating, and pushed me to pursue real change. I did not anticipate taking over a legacy program, but I felt that if I was going to step up, it needed to be done right. Despite our survey process, we routinely take in walk-ins and further that process in order to focus on dignity and well-being. I was shocked to hear that Code Blue had yet to reach capacity as of the thirtieth, despite the weather and volume of people completely unsheltered in the city. My, my shelter has been overcapacity for some time now. My shelter has been overcapacity for some time now because we are accepting walk-ins, and as early as last night, I had to turn people away. Why are they not going to Code Blue? This should give the Department of Human Community Affairs strong pause. What does this say about the perception of our shelters? What does this point to regarding the people there and who they serve? I'd like to point out some further numbers. Of six hundred and nineteen people, thirty percent of all unsheltered people in Middlesex County are under the age of eighteen. Forty-four percent were victims of domestic violence, and sixty percent, at least sixty percent, reported one disability or more. A further unsettling reality is that despite only comprising nine percent of the county's total population, black people are more represented than any other group in homelessness. Any policy that harms or alienates the unhoused is categorically more likely to harm a member of a vulnerable community. The continued exclusion of volunteers and direct community oversight creates heightened risk of bigoted violence across the city. Only thirty-nine of the one hundred and twelve million dollars that funds the city total is directly from New Brunswick. All of Code Blue's current funding is through the county. This implies my strong opinion and obligation to the broader community. After all, all the way in Denellin, I am paying towards the pot the city reaches into. You are benefiting from money towns away as you openly project resentment that people may not have been born directly in New Brunswick while still taking on services. How strange to be this focused on borders and why they should allow you to do less under these conditions. Where is the curiosity in helping others? Where is the curiosity in why the systemic challenges are what they are and how we can alter them? I am asking, as one of the community organizers of this city, to see you all do better. I expect actual dignity to be given to people when you have a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that should allow you to do that. Again, I will remind you all, I run on a thirty-seventh of this man's budget. Those policies are not only draconian, but they are proven to not work and incur conflict. They encourage conflict, and for thirty percent of our total unhoused to be children, you would send them to a warming center that will starve them for twelve hours. I ask you all again, where is your curiosity to do more?
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
If you want to speak?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Name and address for the record. You have up to five minutes.
Sure. Hello. Hi, everybody. My name is Maria Fowles. I'm a resident from New Brunswick since three years ago, but I just wanted to buy a fantasy tree. Thank you and congratulations to everybody. I have two requests, I could say. When I came to this city, which is my home right now, I was amazed by the new beautiful buildings and everything in downtown area. Unfortunately, the community area, the people, the actual residence and the area where Livingston is, if you're going out from here to Handy Street, all the way to that side that takes you to the college, Paul Robinson, and further down there. It's completely dirty. The streets are, sorry, disgusting. And I notice is the signs on the street, it says their street cleaning runs just out to October thirty-first. So between October thirty-first and I think April first or something around there, there is, the city gets completely garbage everywhere. On the streets, on the sidewalks, the elderly people, I understand this is part of the community too, to be responsible with our city. So my request at this point is, could you please consider extended opening the street cleaning, January to December thirty-first, runs the entire year? Because city runs every single day. It's not, I don't know, just the nice area of the businesses, hospitals, but we also need someone to take care of that little side that makes that area completely another world from what is downtown, the city hall, the hospital, business area. So it's very, very, very imperative that we take action with that. And we need the city a little bit more in that side there. Also, that includes, probably you have it, probably it is, and the ordinances, the new, the owners, the homeowners, needs to give a little nice face to the city. But they don't do it. And I understand because they don't leave it there. It's just money coming in from the rent, but they don't take care of the houses. They don't take care of the infrastructure. So I understand the people who's renting those apartments, those buildings, those houses, they have to put a little bit more effort in, you know, maintain cleanliness or something like that. But in the, in the infrastructure, definitely, it's the homeowner. So they need to clean their houses. They need to beauty their houses. Probably there is any, as I said, any ordinances saying what they have to do, because it's not just, okay, I want to rent a house. You know how rented it right now. It's so expensive. And they have two, three apartments, two, three tenants. They have like two, three thousand dollars each one, but they didn't do nothing to provide a nice area, a nice apartment, a nice house, a nice environment for these people who's living there. So that's part of their responsibilities and obligations. That's what they have a security deposit if they say like, okay, they have to take care of their area where they live. But that's what the security deposit is for. So that's, you know, in general, about beauty, not just this area, but the entire world. The second request is something that I've been talking and I listen here, about shelters. And this is very important too, because I have my daughter and a couple friends from high school. They walk in from the New Brunswick Science School, and they have to cross our handy, unhandy street. They have to go to the other side, Paul Robinson, and continue walking out. If we don't take care of this homeless, we don't, we're not taking care of our kids. Because they feel afraid. They feel like they don't want to walk through the park, those two parks, the new park on Handy Street before Paul Robinson. The kids have to go around or, I think it is, or go past Handy and go to the other side to make it to their house in here. They don't want to walk in. So if we take care of our homeless, we're taking care of our kids. That's very, very, very necessary. That was it. And I really appreciate if you pay attention to this important things about beauty that we need and to take care of the people who we all need. The homeless and kids definitely need our kids.
I would say if you have any specific addresses, if you could give those to the administrator of cleaning up. There is an ordinance. You have to clean up twenty-four inches into the road. We have inspectors that do go out, have given out tickets and stuff like that.
Probably, we have to, probably as a city, you have to probably put a little bit more effort or be a little bit more strict with the homeowners. Because I talked a couple times with inspectors, that's like, we just ticket them. We just ticket them. It's a fee, it's a fee, it's a fee. Yes, but at one point, they need to fix that. You know what I mean? Because like, okay, it's like five times ticket. So something else has to come in after that. And the answer is, I said, the ordinance right now is everybody in every city just up to October thirty-first. So if you extend it, the street cleaning-
We'll discuss that. Go to the snow and stuff like that.
Yeah, if you extend the street cleaning to the entire city from January to December, that would be a big change, definitely. Thank you.
Somebody else from the public?
Good evening once again. Charlie Cradwell, 1-4 City M Street. Congratulations to everyone once again. I hope you'll be guided by the Constitution and your constituents. I'll start with an apology. I think I made an overstatement in my prior remarks today. The state did not take over the MCMJIF. I believe it was, it's fair to say it's under state supervision. It has been now for a couple of years. Can you confirm with Mr. Drulus that's the case?
Sure.
Mr. Cradwell, ten civilians. I don't know what he needs to be confirmed.
So you know, so.
Just try to make a gesture of correcting the record here, that the JIF has been under state supervision, is not taken over by the state. I apologize for my error. And I think it's important for folks to correct themselves when they say things that are incorrect. So I always try to do that. I also want to say thank you to Councilwoman Gaskins for the prompt follow-up after the last meeting with my inquiry on hit-and-runs. Think that's how it should always go. If you can't answer a question in real time during the meeting, just answer it right away or soon as possible when you get home or the next morning at least, rather than making us wait a full two weeks and come to another meeting to get our answers. So I really do appreciate it, Councilwoman. Thank you. I'll start with some broader comments about, you know, the city and where we're at. I had an interaction with our mayor. Has a little something to do with the JIF. I'm sure you read my article. Quote, the headline was Judge Orders Councilman to Pay Accuser Fifteen K in Sex Harassment Case. This is about Councilman Fleming's case. And I believe it was September twenty-second that I caught up with our mayor and, you know, I asked him about this. I thought it was a pretty newsworthy, important thing to ask. And he told me, quote, "Charlie, don't bother me. You know I don't talk to you about those things." Quote, "Why would I talk to you about any of that stuff? You've been a political enemy of mine for a very long period of time." I was a little taken aback by that. I want to say that, you know, I don't think anyone in this room is my enemy. And I don't think the mayor is my enemy, political or otherwise. I think we're all in the same city, and our fates are tied in that way. We should be supporting one another. And it's okay to have disagreements. It's okay to, it's okay to argue. It's okay to debate. But I think we need to view each other as being on the same team. If we really do care about New Brunswick, that's why we're all here, right? Everyone is in this room because we care about New Brunswick. And so to that end, I would like the mayor to join these meetings. I will note that the Edison Council, I see you shaking your head. No.
I tell you right now, for the next two years, if he wants to show up as a citizen, he can welcome him. This is a city council meeting, a legislative body. He's in charge of the executive branch. We have the municipal courts take care of the judicial branch. He takes care of his, we take care of ours. So if he wants to come, fine, but I'm not going to tell him to come.
I'm glad you won't block him, but I would actually encourage you to extend an invitation. It doesn't have to be every meeting, but it might be nice to say once a month or once every three months.
For what purpose?
To give an update on the work the administration's doing and to field questions from the council and the public.
We don't have any questions for him. If we do, we see him personally, as most people do.
Right. Well, you see what a difficult time I have getting my questions answered. So I would like the mayor to come in public and answer some questions so that I can see the answers to the questions. I can see what questions you ask and how he responds. And, you know, it's not, it's not about me, right? I want the mayor to be a part of this. And I will note that the Edison Council president that was sworn in just last night, Edison has the same exact form of government, Faulkner Act, seven-member council, at-large councils, staggered elections, partisan elections. They have decided they will invite the mayor to come on a monthly basis to their council meetings. And it's up to him to accept or not. I would ask you to extend a similar invitation to our mayor. It sounds like you're not interested in doing that, but I'd ask you to consider.
I understand that.
Some other suggestions. Other councils have committees. To my knowledge, this council has no committees, correct?
Correct. We have liaisons.
Right. Yeah, and I'm suggesting that you have committees of, you know, subset of council members for, yeah, issues like, say, public safety. And that those committees could meet outside of this meeting and then have a report that, you know, that somebody who chairs that committee would give that report. Would that be something you'd be willing to try out?
We'll think about it.
Okay. I have a few more suggestions if you bear with me for another minute. Would you mind?
Not at this time.
No, really?
Yep.
Mind the spirit of the new year?
Not in the spirit. The spirit of the year is five minutes.
Okay, well, that was great. I guess we're back to business.
I want to see me after the meeting.
I will. I'll talk to you after. Thank you. Sincerely. Happy New Year.
Anyone else from the public wish to have any public comments?
My name is Yoshi. I'm a resident of Princeton and Somerset.
Is it possible, I mean, if you're just talking to us, is it possible to take off the mask just to speak into the microphone? Very hard to hear that. That's the reason.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Yoshi. I live in Princeton, but I've been in Somerset and do a lot of organizing and volunteering here in New Brunswick. I am just here to submit to the public record the racial disparities in total homeless population in Middlesex County, and also this pit summary, pit stands for point in time summary of 2024 Middlesex from Monarch Housing Associates. So can I do the city council?
City clerk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to hear.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none?
No, she's too adjourned.
Say.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Lawrence?
Yes.
Council Vice President Castaneda?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Any good job?